This conference will now be recorded.
You should, you can, I don't think it's required. It wouldn't be a bad idea to, I mean, we're present, both Frank and I, possibly Justin later. But we will probably just in brief refer to your minutes for that majority. But anytime we are active or speak, we'll have to make note of it for our record. So I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Monterey Select Board. My current members present for that meeting are Susan Cooper and Frank Abbott.
So I just, I just want to register like a concern that, I mean, I know you David from the phialog, but he hasn't, David hasn't visited any of these sites. He hasn't gotten any of the information by email and had a chance to review it. So I'm concerned that he's voting on something that, the thing is that.
I don't think I voted.
Okay, so are you not going to vote today, you're just attending the meeting?
I'm attending and if there are things that need a vote, and I know something about it, because I have looked at every map here, I will, I will come in and, I'm really great at that.
Yeah, I guess I could.
Well, it's just that our typical process, the girls who goes circumvented.
Right.
You know, typically, and David, you know this because you and I have a conversation on the phone.
Right.
We invite people who are interested in joining the commission for an open seat to come attend a meeting to see how we work. And then at the end of the meeting to meet with the commissioners to talk about the time commitment, the training required, going on site visits, all of those kinds of things. And, you know, sometimes somebody's really interested and then they find out when our meeting is and they said, oh, I'm not available on most days, you know, or, oh, I'm only here eight months out of the year. So it's really important that, you know, we understand what's going on with somebody and get, you know, a good feeling about whether or not, you know, this is a good fit and recommended to the select board that they then be appointed. It's also honestly to avoid having people join the select board at an open seat just so that they can vote on something that they are aware of that's coming down the pipe that, you know, they feel like they want to vote on and then kind of fall off the radar afterwards. So it's important, yeah.
So I'm a recent member, four months ago, this is not the process I went through. I did exactly what Noel said, so I'm, I don't know anything about you. I have no idea what your concerns are. I have no idea what worries you have with the Wetland Protection Act or any, anything else because we haven't had a chance to have that discussion prior to you sitting on this floor. So I have a serious concern with that because there's two tracks apparently to get on this commission. And I don't think that is democratic or it's not also legal.
And we did have a conversation, I was under the impression that you would be attending this meeting and then just meeting with the commissioners at the end and, you know, we talked about all this on the phone and you said, oh yeah, that sounds like great. And then all of a sudden I, I hear from someone that, oh, you were appointed and would be coming to this meeting and I was like, what? So, you know, it's, it's a concern and, you know, frankly, the optics are concerning. And it's baffling to me because it's not as if we were in dire need of filling that seat right now. So I don't understand what the rush was by the select board. And, you know, if you're married to someone on the select board, I think you know somebody might have some questions, got potential conflict of interest. I think that's only fair to ask. So I just, you know, I think, I think there are a number of concerns here. And I think you should consider maybe you're not attending on anything at this meeting until we really have a good conversation and, you know, are able to move forward where everybody's.
I think we could stay after the meeting to have that conversation.
Yeah.
I'm not, I think I have a good mind, but I find that it's, I feel a little bit blindsided.
That's, that's where we all.
And also, I don't understand why there's another meeting going on at the same time. Maybe I just don't understand.
This is open, open, it's open pause, open meeting.
There's, there's a forum here of select board members.
There's two selectmen here, they need to be in open meetings so they can comment.
We had to do it, for example, when there were meetings about the Southern Brookshire Schools. All three of us wanted to attend the meeting because it was like, we could have questions.
So if you come here for meetings to your own.
Yes.
You're not really attending as a person of interest, you're attending as a select board.
It doesn't, but it doesn't matter how you go, if there's more, if, if Frank and I both were to go to any public meeting and even as people and express an opinion, one of us could talk without the other one, or it's considered deliberation.
Okay, alright.
It's not my role.
No, 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 I just, I just.
I don't even, I, it's a very annoying role at the time.
But thank you for the inspiration.
You're totally welcome.
And it's interesting because I had someone who I know that's an environmental, environmental scientist and I, I was hoping that she could join the commission, but now we have seven, so now she can't. So it's, it's just confusing.
Just so I can, so people, if certain people want to leave. Oden, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Shane. Thank you, Shane. Yeah, we do. Okay, so David, are, are we, are we all in agreement then that this would not be a meeting that we'd be, you know, voting on, but here, you know, as a new member and, and observing for your first meeting? And move on from there?
Well, under policy three, I can abstain, which is allowed. And I can certainly abstain from voting, but have it recorded as an extension.
I'm not a politarian.
Yeah, I think this needs to be a further discussion with the select board going forward as well. Okay. Wetland Protection Act requests for determination of applicability, 22A Elephant Rock Road, map 104, 105, lot 014-39, submitted by Delight Dota for tree removal and related site work. That person here, she did?
Dexter. Yeah, I'm here from John Kill Tree.
Hi Dexter, how are you?
Doing alright, how are you?
Good, do you want to just say a few words about the trees?
Yeah, so it's basically the, at the main house, which is 22A, there are six trees. One is a 22-inch diameter oak with a significant amount of rock. These are all on the slope of the house. And the rest are different sizes of ash tree and some are dead, some are in different stages of decline. Then at the cottage, there are two dead, basically starting to fall apart, ash trees. And there's a hemlock underneath where those are, those are close to the dock at 22.
And unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the site visit. I don't have anything to say?
Yeah, they were just, they were pretty bad. We just want to make, I just, I don't know if we have to do a condition on it, but to make sure that there, a stump is left, just, you know, that's what you normally do anyways.
Yep.
They were, they were pretty bad.
So odd, three foot.
Uh, I don't know.
Two foot.
Two foot, as long as it's, as long as it's.
Is it, well, two, two is kind of, what do you think Dexter? I know often someone will say, two foot is kind of, you know, it's still something that somebody might accidentally walk into or trip over or something and three foot might be a better size.
I think that the oak is very close to a pathway, so that one, you know, could be left taller. All the rest are kind of out in the woods and within garden beds. So I think those, those could be, could get lower.
Okay.
Yeah, they were pretty bad.
Very sad.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so what did we agree on for height?
Uh, three, the three, three foot, the one that's closest to the, the oak, that's closest to the halfway and the others two. I hope that's okay for the ladies.
The one tree closest to shoreline, I know we talked on the site about leaving the water for natural decay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be at the, at the cottage at 22.
Thanks Shane for remembering that.
Yeah.
Oliver, you want to make motion? Well, that's what we have to do then, okay?
Motion to accept the RDA as.
Submitted?
Submitted with a negative rate standard conditions and two to four, I think three foot as noted.
Okay, and leave the final tree for decay, natural.
Final tree for decay. Second?
Second?
Ball in favor?
Alright. Okay. Who's second in that?
I did. Not even tomatoes.
Yeah, we've got no tomato, well, thank, basically it's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you Dexter. Okay. Shane, do you want to read the next portion?
Alright, so we're coming into the miscellaneous, we're setting some protocols for the discussion portion of this. Everyone sign in with the name and address if you're going to speak, please. That also greatly affects my record keeping, if you help me out. Kim will report the meeting and keep time for the public comment. Turn cell phones on silent. Step out to make or take calls. Additional conversations are distracting. Wait to be recognized to give comments. Three-minute limit, no shouting, no foul language. No one should be Garfield bullied or commented to. Everyone please be kind and respectful. We are all Monteraeans.
Monteraeans. Oh my, Shane. Shane.
And these are our neighbors.
Okay, well, please, everybody, be kind, there's going to be differing opinions always. And it's important that everybody feel heard and respected and be kind. So, does someone want to?
Correctly, one announcement is the discussion.
The discussion, yes. So, Lake Guard requests for amendment. And actually, for, for anything else that is heard.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Hillary Kenyon and I see a few male references, yeah, hi. So today, on behalf of the town of Monterey, we are asking the commission to consider an amendment to the order of conditions for the drawdown permit to extend the drawdown from three feet to six feet to resume the historical way that Eurasian milkfoil has been managed. I believe you have a copy of the letter with the specific request. There's a lot of detail in there, if you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you. Hillary, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you a professional wetland scientist?
No, I am not, but I am a soil scientist and certified in wetland delineation.
Okay, and are you a, an aquatic marine biologist, wildlife biologist?
A wildlife biologist? No, I am not.
Oh, like an aquatic wildlife biologist?
Yes, an aquatic ecosystem scientist, yes.
Okay.
I have a degree from Mass and Plant and Soil Sciences. A master's degree.
Is there anything you want to add regarding your submission or anything you want to point out?
I think, I think the letter really speaks for itself. And if you have specific questions related to that or the letter from the town of Mass and Soil Sciences, I can speak to any questions.
Could you give a summary of your letter to the?
Sure, basically, we're asking to revert back to the historical six-foot drawdown because after surveying the results of that three-foot drawdown in this past June, we saw a dramatic increase in Eurasian milkfoil in primarily the three-to-foot, the three-to-six-foot area that was no longer impacted by drawdown. The use of drawdown in water bodies across the state and the region and nationally is frequent and it's generally designed to manage invasive plants, but it also is designed to manage native plants that are growing to extreme biomass that is not conducive to overall ecology.
When you, can you define, I'm sorry, can you define dramatic?
Dramatic biomass?
No, you said dramatic growth in that range, I'm just curious what, how to define that.
There's a, there's a survey that's in the document that was given to you guys that showed how widespread milkfoil is throughout the lake. Surveys conducted by myself, but also by Ken, Historically, and other consultants have demonstrated that there usually is only a few parts of milkfoil in a lot of these shoreline areas, the three-to-six-foot zone, and I was seeing like massive beds larger than the size of this room topped out to the surface in June, and it only gets more dense and worse.
Yeah, it was very complaining. So you, you've been tracking this for multiple years?
Yeah.
And the trend you saw after the three-foot drawdown compared to the trend prior to that?
I was shocked, I really was, with how quickly the plant growth came back and how widespread Eurasian milkfoil was. When I first came here, Mike told me a story about how milkfoil used to be prevalent throughout the entire lake and I didn't believe him because of how few the locations were. And they were doing a good job managing it in multifaceted ways. And then after seeing the results of the, after not having that six-foot drawdown, I realized how impactful it actually was for the overall lake health.
Does that impacted the three-to-foot, six-foot range, have any impact on the ranges, the depths that are greater than six feet?
So there were some places in the areas that were greater than six feet that appeared to me that they were more dense than as they were the year prior, around the same time of year. And.
Overall, I'm sorry, not around density, I meant around some coverage, coverage of.
Yeah, so when I say dense, I'm referring to a bio volume of 10% coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Based on like general aquatic plant survey methods.
So the summary is that the impact of the three-foot drawdown has been extensive is that the lake of the health seemed, the health of the lake, sorry, wrong order, seems to be deteriorating because of more milkfoil?
Yes, there was a dramatic increase in the invasive Eurasian milkfoil post the three-foot.
I just don't know how we're answering.
Just, just remind everybody that we're not here for this to be presented to us.
I'm just asking some questions.
Right, we're, we're here for the, for the, for the public, you know, to make comments.
I'm just asking questions about this letter.
Right, right, no, I understand, but it will be a different, it will be a different time and place, as you understand, when things get presented. And we're here to listen to, you know, we're asking for the public to hear their comments. Okay? So do people have?
Thank you for your answering my questions.
There's a list here. Who's first on the list?
Next is Mike Parsons.
I'm sure I can't hear you, he's talking.
I'm Dr. Ken Wagner.
Oh, you're Ken Wagner, I.
And I am not employed by the Lake Association or the town, I am not, certainly not by the Commonwealth. I'm here because I'm seeing this happen with more and more of my former clients. I'm semi-retired at this point. I'll do permitting work if I can avoid it at all. I would have much rather did an interesting social event this evening than I'm going to make. I've given you a letter as well, you know, I'm going to have seen that, not that you gave it to package. I just want to hit a couple of key points. You're being asked to do two things. One is consider this as an amendment instead of making, do a whole new notice of intent. That is a tough ask, I realize. If this was going from three to six foot and you had no experience of six foot, I would say it's absolutely too big a change. But given that the six foot was the norm for well over a decade, you jumped to three foot and it's been frankly disastrous, worse than any of us thought it could be that fast. Going back is just a return to what you already know. So it is not the subject of a total new notice of intent from my perspective. Now, I go work for the Commonwealth, I'm not a member of the commission, you guys have to make that call. If you decide to go with the full NOI, it will delay this for a year and would be rehashing all the same things that have already been hashed out. Okay? With regard to what your real job is when you make a decision, is you're looking at the eight interests of the Wetland Protection Act. The first five are almost inconsequential here. Surface and groundwater supply hasn't been an issue.
Shane, excuse me, I don't think it's appropriate for you to be telling us what our job is or what, what is consequential, quite honestly.
You've got to allow them to speak.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. You're absolutely allowed to speak, but this is not. That, but that is not.
It wasn't meant to tell you what you have to do, only what you're dealing with. You look at the eight interests of the act and consider what you're really looking for is adverse impacts. It's, it's a problem, you don't have to look at public safety, recreational utility, or property values, not in your purview. All important things, but this is about the eight interests of the act. So as I said, the water supply issue is not a big deal. The next two are flood prevention and damage, storm damage prevention. Also generally a positive from drawdown, but not a big deal, Lake Garfield, nobody's talking about them. Last is pollution prevention, early years of the drawdown, you can get some extra nutrients being added in. It's never been really documented to be a big issue. And once you've done it for a few years, it's no longer an issue, you're 10 years down the road from that. So all that really gets focused on here is land-containing shellfish, fish habitat, wildlife habitat. Those are the three biggies. The reality is land-containing shellfish pertains to coastal shelf, commercial shellfish harvest. Actually doesn't protect freshwater mollusks. If the DEP wants to offer some policy counter, then I'd love to hear it because I've never seen it. But that be that made, mollusks are one of the most threatened aquatic life forms. I get that there's concern over that. I went through and did the math and all the stuff you've been told, oh, there's all these losses, blah, blah. It represents about, did you have maximum impact we're proceeding?
I understand that there's a lot to talk about and with this, but you did try to set it for a minute. I weren't here.
You want to tell me not to speak anymore, I can sit down. Okay?
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, and thank you for your letter.
Yeah, great letter.
Wow.
Next.
I can just read down the list.
Can I ask a question? If people speak again, if we get the whole list, if they have additional comments that they'd like to make? I don't see this.
Well, let's see what, how long the meeting is running.
That's fair.
So on, on this list, Oden wrote his name down, he's left. Mike Parsons, I don't know, was he already left?
No.
Mike, oh, you're there, oh, great.
No, I'm here.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike. Hi. I'm Mike Parsons from Kelly Granger and Parsons Surveyors down in Great Garrington. I, I had hoped that we were going to have a hearing tonight, this afternoon, on an RDA that I filed with you.
This is not related to the Garfield.
No. Oh, you live in this.
No, but that's, that's important, if you want to. Yeah. Could you tell my? Kim will talk to you.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I don't know, I don't know what, what type of fire there, if there was an RDA. What, what was the address?
Well, I'm feeling a little dismissed here.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I just, we're doing the public comments around the, the drawdown.
Okay, I'll wait, so I, I'll wait till after that.
Well, that's fine, if you, if you want to, if you want to stick around for all that, okay.
I will.
If, if you said something and we didn't get it or whatever, Kim can talk to you about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so, yeah, that wasn't related to this.
Tracy? Tracy Brennan.
Tracy Brennan, I'm.
Hi Tracy.
Hi. I'm a Monterey citizen, my credentials are nothing like Hillary's or any of the other people that have spoken. I'm a swimmer. And I, I've been swimming since, I mean, I swim every day in the lake, across the small part of the lake and a half for years. And I'm, I appreciate the opportunity to express my concern because this year was really different, if weeds, really, really different, starting in June. And I've been worried ever since then and I was happy to come to this meeting to say they were at their full height right away in June. And I, I bet that's because of the drawdown, the change. And they are more extensive, they're in places where they never were. And I'm really kind of a everywhere, you had to find your way through. So I, I, it was a, as she said, a dramatic difference. And I just wanted to say that from a point of view of a lake person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Boye, sir?
Yes, thank you, I, I am the contractor that handles the leader removal for the town. I don't know if you, if you want to hear it from me now. So, my name is Matt Oak, I'm owner of the Aquatic Services. We've been doing work on the lake for about 10 years now, doing non-chemical, mechanical, physical removal of the.
Diver assisted, this is everything.
Diver assisted suction harvesting, yes. So we generally have been doing two rounds of work a year. The goal of that work, in the way that suction harvesting works, is it's a, it's a long-term approach to reducing densities and populations of plants to reduce the overall infestation of plant species. So we've actually seen quite a bit of success in Lake Garfield because of the dedication to town and how much time we've spent there, with the goal of, again, of decreasing those densities and seeing real progress forward. In some areas, we are finally not finding plants where they're used to being or seeing some native species move back in. A lot of those areas, we've just gone from very, very high-density areas to much thinner, more spread-out patches. Now, generally speaking, when we come in, we do a round in the spring, we do a round in the fall or the late summer. And what we have never had to do before, or we've never seen weeds, is in those areas that are, you know, less than six feet, right? And usually the work that we do ends up being more in the, you know, eight-to-15-foot depths in our experience because the drawdown's been so effective at limiting that milkfoil growth in those areas. And that's really important because it's a big lake, it's got a big problem and everybody's working very hard to try to manage that problem through non-chemical methods. And kind of the pairing of the drawdown with the physical removal is just strategies that really maximize the effectiveness of both working hand-in-hand. So what we witnessed this year, which was alarming to say the least, was areas where generally we've never had to go because there's generally shallower areas where that's taken care of by the drawdown. And areas where our, the patches that we do typically work run along, let's say, you know, in eight-foot depth. And they're kind of centralized there, and those patches were trying to manage before they become bigger problems, those immediately spread to those shallower areas. And in terms of square footage of coverage, you know, easily doubled or tripled in size because they're taking over areas where before they were prevented. So what that does is, you know, not only does it set back the effectiveness of the work that we're putting in, but it also endangers the success that we've had because those areas are now fragment-producing patches of milkfoil. And if you know how it grows, fragments that break off, float around, they start new plants. So any additional areas or any additional growth can contribute and, you know, impact the progress that we're having.
Do you have data on how much more material you pulled out this year than last year?
So the areas where it has expanded into were restricted from going into in the early part of the season. So it's more visually seeing those areas, not being able to work in those. We work in those deeper areas first in the earlier part of the year and then we'll be pushing into those other areas that we can get into that are covered within the permit there in the fall time. So we're planning to go back out here in about a week to do.
I mean, I know this is super anecdotal, but I've seen you guys right in the shallow, in the channel, where I don't ever think I've seen you operate in the channel.
Right, those areas this spring where we've, we've had to go, a lot of those areas are suppressed, you know, given the plants where, you know, normally they would be well below the surface, were reaching the surface already because they didn't have that stumping done or caused by that drawdown. You know, they're kind of given the, the boost that they need to be worse before we even get there.
Okay.
We are nearly 10 times.
Thank you for your comments.
Greg Carnese?
Or you said?
Greg, Greg Carnese, Carnese, I'm sorry.
Really with an I, my ancestors kept cheating today, they didn't ask questions. So Greg Carnese, I have a property at 51 Sylvan Road in Monterey and I've been a member of the Lake Garfield Work Group, which then became the Lake Garfield Committee, appointed by the select board probably seven or eight years ago and every year since it started with others who are here. Hope you don't count that too for three minutes. You've got the letters from two experts. I would prefer to say Matt's another expert doing what he does. And that's the only expert evidence that I think has been presented to you guys. And I think it's, from my standpoint, the practical minds need to prevail here. And the science shows that the drawdown is another piece to the puzzle that has to continue to continue to make progress. You can never eliminate milkfoil, you can only mitigate it. And we have continued to mitigate it more and more based on the steps recommended by the scientists that the Lake Garfield Committee has used and we've reported to the select board. by the scientists that the Lake Garfield Committee has used, and we've reported to the Select Board. It ended up with the town graciously voting for 62.5 to do dash. And I would hate to see us go backwards. And I would ask, I don't know, other than Don, you talk about going out to visiting sites and looking at trees and things for making your decisions. I don't know how many of you have been on the lake. I'm an avid fisher. I've seen milfoil come into this lake and expand. I've seen it on Grand Lake Stream in Maine. I've seen it on Black Lake in upstate New York. You can't ignore it. It doesn't go away. And if you don't address it with the proper tools, which are being recommended, we're going to go backwards. And I just sincerely hope you don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I swim all the time in it, so just so you know. Hi, I swim.
Ron Oppenheimer?
Yeah. Thank you for a minute to speak. I'll take less than three, I'm sure. I have nothing scientific to add to what's been said, but I am here to anecdotally support what's been said about the change in the lake over the last year. We spend our time on the lower bowl, the small bowl, and there's more weeds and milfoil in places where it hasn't been before, and significant amounts of it. So we would like to see us go back to a six-foot drawdown that was successful. We'd like to at least see that happen for another couple of years to see if what we saw this year truly was an aberration resulting from the three-foot drawdown. And I would add to what I think Matt said earlier. There's a cost issue as well to increase the scope of the dash year after year if we allow the milfoil to proliferate. So we want to keep taking a look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Jeff Dressner?
Yeah, I'm just going to gito what was said by Ron and others, that I do support the six-foot drawdown. I've been here a few years, and already I notice a big difference in the amount of weeds. So I would be a proponent of six-foot drawdown.
Thank you, Jeff.
Tom Mancy?
Thank you. I represent myself as a homeowner and landowner on the lake. And also, I represent Parks Commission. I'm the chairperson of the Parks Commission. I can reinforce everything that's been said about the lake from the other people who enjoy Lake Garfield and want to continue to enjoy Lake Garfield. I've been here since the 50s, and I've seen in the 70s, when we had to rebuild the dam, how the water level was purposely let down so the construction could take place. And after that was completed, the lake came back without any significant influence on the wildlife. But from the perspective of the Parks Commission, I want to let you know that we have a very conscientious bunch of lifeguards who try their best to keep the Lake Garfield town beach in tip-top shape. We receive a lot of compliments because of their attention and the guidance that the whole Parks Commission provides them. This year, they have relayed to me that every morning from mid-June through the closure on Labor Day, that they had to spend more and more time and more and more efforts to remove the four, five feet of weeds that accumulate in the entrance to the water. And they rake them, and they put them off to the side. So it's obvious from what you've heard from the others and now what you hear from me in regards to what the beach is up against. Thank you.
I would add that, and I put in a disclosure form, I'm also a resident of the lake, and there has been a ton of biomass that's come out of the lake this year. And that is, as I said, it's a fee dollar.
Next is Mike Germain.
I just would ask that the commission put on the record, formally put on the record, Dr. Wagner's report and the inverter brick report that we had done last year, and the Beaver report that we did last year. And I'd like to cede my three minutes to Dr. Wagner.
Sounds like Congress.
If he starts reading the phone book, I'm out.
Where I left off was the inverbit aspect. 6.7% is my calculation of lost mussels as a result of six-foot drawdown. Pretty hard to call that significant. Fisheries and wildlife were all part of major study from UMass that included Lake Garfield and 17 other drawdown lakes. They did not find any significant adverse impacts. If you look through all the letters, you will find no data and no support for any statement claiming negative impacts. You'll see things like substantial or appreciable. None of them were statistically significant, and I know the work. The interesting part is they've never published any of that work. They've simply let the data slide into the wrong, and they never talk about it. I would send a presentation by Jason Carvagnati, who wrote his thesis on it, with Jason Solarski, another member, nail work for DFW Nail. They don't even mention fisheries or wildlife, the entire presentation. It's all about mussels and inverbits and other things. They're really, the data do not show these impacts. I'm not going to tell you that drawdown is the be-all, end-all, the perfect solution for everything. I recommend to lakes this year not to pursue drawdowns. In your case, it's the right way to keep it under control around the edge. And there's no evidence of any major adverse impact to any interest for the Wildlife Protection Act.
I see Liz, Liz Oppenheimer?
Hi, I'm Liz. I live on the lake. I live in the small bowl. And ditto to everybody. I think the lake is unsafe unless we draw down the weeds for people swimming, getting tangled. It's hazardous on boats. It's hazardous for people swimming. There's more of the cutting of, boats cut the weeds because they're so high. So there's a cutting in the way the current runs. These weeds just accumulate on everybody's shorelines, and then there's like mites and there's bugs. And we've never had that before, where you have to spend an hour just cleaning out from the boats, you know, that are using, you know, the lake, and especially in the small bowl. We've never had weeds. So people can't swim. It's not enjoyable. I've been here for 35 years. I swim. We've always had weeds. Weeds have always been in the lower bowl. We've always navigated them to the island. But this year, I think it was really unsafe for people. And people who are on paddleboards, the fins get caught in the weeds now. Before, maybe this was an anomaly this year, but we know at least we have safe boating and safe swimming in the past. So for me, that's my feeling about the weeds.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. That's the list.
That's the list? There's no other...
I'll put my name on there then. I want to let everybody else have a chance.
So for those of you on the board that haven't met me, I'm Susan Cooper. I live on Rosewald Road, so I'm not on the lake, but I am a member of the Select Board. I also happen to be an evolutionary ecologist by training. Spent a number of years teaching biology at both the high school and college level. So I have some experience with biology. I'm not a lake scientist. One, there are a couple of things I want to put out there. One, given the history of the drawdown, this is all in the documents, but I think it's important some of these people haven't read those documents. Given the history of the drawdown in Lake, for, since the 70s really, many of those years were at six foot. We'd be returning to what we were doing, and I think it's important to emphasize that, given the history. If it were de novo, it'd be one thing, but given how many years it's been a six-foot drawdown, to go back from three to six doesn't seem like an enormous change. It's more a return to what was a permitted through an N O I practice over many years for a number of reasons. I think the data that I've seen supports doing it, particularly given how many problems are coming from the result of the three-foot drawdown. And among the things that concern me is that the Fish and Wildlife letter that I read today, and I can read a quote from it if you like, but in fact, maybe I should. I think that author is using his, I don't think he has the data to support his contentions. He's doing it through implication, and he's misleading people. So in here, he says, "In the August 27 letter," that's the letter the Select Board wrote, or, no, I guess it would be Hillary's letter, "following the 2024-25 winter water level drawdown at Lake Garfield, there was a notable increase in the abundance of both invasive and native plants in the three-to-six-foot zone." This author underscores native plants. "This supports the argument that drawdown impact the resource area as there is native plant recovery observed in the absence of the impacts of the drawdown. A plain read of the policy would conclude that increasing the impact by 50 acres is not relatively minor." And he goes on. "I want to note that there's a reason that invasive plants are called invasive. It would be expected that in the first year at the lower drawdown, numerous species might have a higher density level. But an invasive plant invades. We know historically that unchecked invasives become invasive, and they gradually, and sometimes not so gradually, outcompete the native species. That's the purpose of the drawdown program and the efforts to control. Because without active control, that invasive species outcompetes the native species. And since none of the native species can use the milfoil, it has a lot of negative ecological impacts. And I think that kind of misleading implication is important to note. I, it's hard for me as a biologist to think that this isn't a good idea, but I'm going to raise one other rather, I think, ugly specter, right? I spent years in DC as an anti-toxics campaign. But at some point, the question of whether we should be using poison in the lake to control the milfoil is going to come up because it's going to become monetarily impossible to control. I know it's my business. Can I finish my sentence?
I'm giving everyone three minutes.
We know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So I was, one of these years ago, and I got a scientist on the phone who basically said...
Sorry, your name and that.
Richard Montgomery, sixth down room.
Thank you.
Made the same comments about the best thing for Lake Garfield is to draw the lake down as far as possible for as long as possible. Last year, I think there was a representative from D E P who said the state of Massachusetts does not think drawdowns are effective. And it was my understanding that although we all sat here and said, "Six feet, six feet," the state of Massachusetts said, "Three," and that's what we got. So is this body the one who's going to determine six feet?
Yes.
So the state of Massachusetts' opinion on drawdowns and herbicides are not under discussion?
So they weigh in, they weigh in to, like everybody else, they wrote a letter and they put their point of view in.
But they don't appeal.
They do not.
They do. Obviously, they do.
They give appeal power as anybody else.
That's not a veto.
They could appeal your decision.
So last year, did we approve three, or did they...
Last year, the town applied for three foot, and that's what we approved.
Because they don't...
Because we knew that the comments...
So unless the state of Massachusetts appeals, let's assume you're going six feet because it's the overriding pending.
Yes.
Then it would only be state of Massachusetts' appeal that would change.
That's correct. That is correct.
And herbicides is a dirty word in town in Monterey?
The state has approved herbicide list.
I'm sorry?
The state has an herbicide list that is approved.
Right.
There's a guideline.
But we don't want to use...
It's the townspeople who voted at a town meeting a few years ago not to use herbicides. I don't know how binding and legal was that. As I recall, it was just one of those casual votes.
I can speak to that.
It was a casual.
Like Noel, oh, Justin Maycock. I don't know.
Okay.
Justin Maycock, 550 Main Road. Just to speak to the herbicide point a little bit. Every few years, the citizenry puts forward a citizen's petition to town meeting. It's not binding. It says that the town shall not use herbicides in Lake Garfield. The town could apply for a permit to use herbicides. If I'm not mistaken, even Friends of Lake Garfield may be able to apply to put herbicides in Friends of Lake Garfield. Because that petition has come up repeatedly over the years, even though it's non-binding, it passes town meeting each time with overwhelming support. We have chosen to defer to that overwhelming popular mandate against herbicides. That's kind of the history on it. It's, usually they say it's a five-year, non-binding petition, but I think last time that they put it forward, it had only been three or four years since the last time they put it forward, and it just passes overwhelmingly each and every time. So not binding, but we try to respect people's opinions.
Can I make another comment if I want to?
Have anybody not on that list?
Pauline, I think, has been one of the...
Is there anyone else Republican who wants to speak? Yeah, I'd like to.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Does that help?
Yeah. My name's Ken Bastel. I'm the 35th Libra Flame.
Oh, my mother.
Yep. And I've, where's the sign sheet? Oh. We've been here since the mid-'60s. My parents built the lake house there. It's a second home, but it was insulated. So we spent our summers on the lake. We spent our winters and all of our vacations enjoying the lake, enjoying the Berkshires. I just had, and I remember the drawdowns even back in the 70s, you know, where it was a six-foot drawdown. We thought it was for water management for the snowmelt in spring. But as I got older, I figured out it was for the weed management, and it seemed to have done a very good job over the years. You know, I've been very happy to see it happen every single year until this last year because I've seen a tremendous difference. And there's been a lot of changes in this town, and I'm just hoping that that's not one of them. And I'm not really certain about the algae bloom. Did that have something to do with the immense weeds? We actually had to swim in the lake a few times with the bacteria count. That hasn't happened before.
It does. It does.
It does.
Yeah, so that hasn't been mentioned, but I just thought that that was worth talking about.
Yeah, it's difficult to relate it directly to the lack of the six-foot drawdown, but the plants are recycling phosphorus and nitrogen throughout the retorial zone. And a dramatic change in what's been done historically could potentially allow algae and cyanobacteria to settle on the open sediments and to settle on the plant growth that's there. They get nutrients oftentimes from the plants themselves that are drawing it up from the sediments, and then they add dirt onto the plants' stems.
The bacteria are not caused by the plants, but the lack of circulation induced by the plants allows them to survive.
It also allows more phosphorus to come out of the sediments, which then fuels the cyanobacteria growth.
So that's just all something, again, that's very new this year that we haven't seen in the past. So I just wanted to thank you for considering this and listening to us today, and hope that we can revert back to the six-foot drawdown.
Okay, so just to be clear, so everybody understands what we're doing here today. We are not deciding on a three-foot versus six-foot drawdown here today. The only question before this commission today is, does this request for an amendment fit the criteria for an amendment? Or does it require the town to come back with a completely new application in the form of a notice of intent? That is the only question before us.
We're not even putting on the amendment today.
Right. Yes.
So typically in conservation commissions, an example...
You've seen it, you've seen that, your thing that's gone.
So typically...
No, 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 no. You had your three minutes, but you gave it to Ken last night. Everybody spoke, and...
Is there a time commitment on this limitation on what just has to end?
Well, we'd rather not have, you know, a three-hour meeting.
This is a procedural, this, we've... This is a procedural, this, we've often had three-hour meetings.
And we don't really want to do that.
Well, but for this, I think we want to. Anyway, this is a procedural-
I'd like to-
This is a procedural, can I make a procedural question?
You want to, right, so, yeah.
But I don't want you to close the public thing till I make procedural point.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So conservation commissions, often when they consider it an amendment, they decide when it's major, minor, and then they can, then they pass on whether they accept the amendment or not. This is very typical. This happens in Pittsfield and many. And I would like the board to vote on whether, well, you're going to vote first, whether it's major, minor. But I would like the board to vote to say that you can then consider the amendment. I don't know why it should be given that, because it's not in the laws, it's not the rule.
Why didn't, why didn't you stay on the permission?
This, that's, with all respect, that's not really-
That's, that's, that's pretty rude.
Well, I don't mean to be rude.
Well, you are rude.
You're kind of telling us what we need to be doing and, um-
Well, I, I do-
Okay, 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 okay.
I'm asking the commission, I'm asking the commission to vote on this. That's all I'm asking. I'm going to tell you-
To vote on what?
I want you to vote on whether, if you say that it's not a major amendment, that you can then vote on the amendment today.
We can't do that.
Yes, you can.
It needs a public hearing.
Well, you should have made a public hearing. That's how we-
But now we stand around finger pointing.
Right, thank you. Uh, thank you.
So I have a couple of things that I wanted to say. Thank you for everything that you've said because it seems like, I was very brave. So I'm, I'm a little nervous, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. So I wanted to actually hand this out so people could kind of see. So this is a laboratory examination of the effectiveness of winter season lake drawdown to control invasive Eurasian milfoils. You can pass these out. Um, this is my comments in the back and this is the scientific information in front.
Can you give me a sec?
And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read, um, in plain English, what the scientific, um, what the scientific, what the science says. "The effects of a drawdown in any given year are unpredictable. There are two ways that milfoil can be killed with a drawdown. The soil or the sand or the substrate in the, in the drawdown area must be twenty-three degrees Fahrenheit or lower for forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours, that substrate has to be twenty-three degrees Fahrenheit." Now, I don't know about you, but I know that if it's covered by ice or if it's covered by snow, that substrate is not going to reach twenty-three degrees Fahrenheit, right? So this is something we need to, um-
I don't know.
We need to, uh-
I don't know that that's just-
Yeah, well, the, the research has shown that and it's been, it's been all of this research that is, it constantly says it over and over and over. I think that's important to note. Also, the substrate needs to be dry for forty-eight hours. The dryness level must be zero-point-zero-two. That's, so I actually figured out what that actually means. It means twenty-one quarts of moisture or twenty liters per cubic meter of sand. Also, some researchers have posed this question and I'd like to ask Susan and also Hillary. Could milfoil, um, become, um, drawdown tolerant? And what is our plan for Lake Garfield if this happens? And also, research, research has shown that, you know, plants can mutate and milfoil is incredibly strong. So I'm concerned about the future, about climate change and how our, our, um, climate is not going to be cold enough in a few years to kill this milfoil. And that is my concern. I think that we need to have more plans for how to get rid of milfoil than just the drawdown. So that's, that's what I'd like to say. Very important for me to kind of think about that. And also, I have one other thing that I wanted to say, so I have a couple of seconds more. Where is it? Uh, cyanobacteria is actually not a bad thing. Um, it is, it is a bacteria that can photosynthesize. Okay, so when it, when it gets filled with phosphorus, phosphates in the lake, it can grow and bloom and that makes, yes, that makes the toxic bloom. However, if there was less phosphorus in Lake Garfield, and it's been shown that Lake Garfield has the highest percentage of phosphorus compared to all the lakes in the area. Lake Garfield has got so much phosphorus compared to the other lakes in the area, which causes the cyanobacteria to bloom. It also causes the milfoil to grow. Is all of this true? So I think that, and where does phosphorus come from? It comes from fertilizers, it comes from, um, detergents, it comes from septic systems, all of those things. It's still my turn.
You're, you're kind of-
It'd only be fair.
Back, I didn't know.
Can I ask a question?
That's important.
Am I allowed to ask a question to understand something?
Yeah, I mean, I think she just gave her a piece, so if you want to have more discussion.
Yeah.
I just, quick question. You're saying that because the temperature, whether it's climate controlled, the ground has to reach twenty-three. So if we had a larger drawdown and the land was, the, the lake was exposed, then the ground would freeze. So in what you're saying is-
If the ground freezes, it's thirty-two. It's got to get down to twenty-three.
But I'm saying if more was exposed to the, to weather, to environment-
Last year, there was all snow. Last year, there was snow on the ground.
But we, but we didn't have as large of a drawdown to the ground. So what you're saying, didn't get a chance to, that, I'm just trying to understand. That's not arguing.
Yeah.
Can I also comment on that?
Yeah.
So I, I tried to answer questions before about this.
Yeah.
Um, I think that this is a flawed study in saying that there's only two ways that milfoil is killed in the drawdown zone and that they're both related to temperature or moisture. A lot of it is physical. So when there's a drawdown and it's ice covered, there's also some amount of sediment disturbance and that's going to cause some of the fine sediment to be moving out of that littoral zone. The sediment is actually where most of the phosphorus comes up. So the phosphorus that's in the sediment, that's in the littoral zone, is what's causing extreme plant growth and density. It's been coming from watershed for a very long time. And moving it out and then out of the lake through the drawdown, that's actually a, a type of phosphorus removal project. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not understanding your views. So, yeah, so the, the physical disturbance of sediment also attributes to how well a drawdown can work. And it's based on how slow your area is in a drawdown and drawdowns typically work better in areas that have coarser substrates.
Which we do.
Right, which you do. You have a lot of your substrate. And so I, I, this is one paper and we're familiar with the authors. I think Ken was actually the editor that approved this for the News Journal article. Um, and I, one paper, which really is not good science to support.
I agree and, and it's quoted in lots of other, lots and lots, lots of other papers and it is the only one that we have that actually, you know, measured it, actually did a scientific study. We don't, all, all we're doing is surmising.
Yeah, so this is also based on Candlewood Lake.
Yeah.
And I have personal experience surveying Candlewood Lake and I can tell you that the drawdowns done at Candlewood Lake worked very well for a long time.
But what, what's our, what's our plan for the future when it stops working? That's my-
I don't think it will stop working if we do it in the way that was outlined in the amendment.
You're saying that-
I think it will be working well in some years and now is good in other years based on weather changes and winter variations. But the climate isn't changing fast enough in the Berkshires for it to not have those freezing conditions in the time period when we would start refilling in February.
So you believe that last year it would have had freezing, would have had twenty-three Fahrenheit in the soil? You believe that that would have happened last year with all the snow?
I don't believe that it's wholly temperature dependent.
Yeah.
What scientific studies have you done? I don't know. It's just, just at least there was a study that was done. Well, is there anyone who, the public who has not started yet? Sorry. Anyone wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to move to close public comments. I'll give a second.
You're good, sir.
Thank you. All favors?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you.
And thank you to the public for taking your time coming here today and, and bring your, your thoughtful comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we going to have a discussion now?
So now, so now, we just need to discuss whether or not this meets criteria for an amendment. And, um, Justin, can I just ask you, I know that you were at the tail end of the joint meeting with New Morroles to look at your management plan. Were you, or was, was anybody else, I didn't really have close attention of how many people were there, there were a number of people there, um, for the actual presentation.
Oh, sorry, at the tail end of the presentation. Am I allowed to talk?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that the, that, that presentation that was made, their management plan was, was really quite well done. Very, very detailed, very well thought out, very clear. Um, I think, I think amazing. Me, you know, Lake Garfield could learn, Lake Garfield, people can learn a lot from, from the way they did their application, their NOI and their presentation. And just to say that.
I tried to find it online.
Go down, come on.
I would like to see it.
Okay, so they have, I just want to say they have a, a several point, they have the several, um, different ways of handling the milfoil, not just a drawdown. They do a drawdown, they do harvesting, they do ventic barriers, they also do diver assisted section, they do many, many different kinds of things.
It's a different way.
Yeah, I know it's a different, I know it's very different. Still, it's close by. It's very near, it's near to us. It's not Candlewood Lake that's far away. You know, it's close to us. Um, they do different things, so, yeah. Okay, so looking at the criteria, everybody has the guidelines for amendments?
Do we have comments or?
Well, we're, we're going to be discussing now whether or not-
Well, she got a comment. So I would like to make a comment also.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
On the major, minor topic, I'm going to, I'm going to mention two things. Um, I think we're in an unprecedented time with climate change going on. I think everybody's trying to do the right thing. The major, minor, the, the allowance for an amendment is designed to provide flexibility to commissions when changes need to be made. And we try to make a change and, uh, I think we can all agree that the lake health is the goal. That's the goal. That's the only thing. And there are many factors that make it up, the milfoil being one, the presence of mollusks being another, right? But I think we can all agree that the health of the lake is declining. So whatever we're trying to do, we're not achieving the ultimate goal. And I think that we need to take advantage of every tool that we have to work on that, okay? And I think the major difference between when we made our decision last year and I was making our decision this year, and it was situated by Mark Stinson, was we had no data. So we only were able to accept the generic report, uh, the G E I R, um, in Practical Lake because that was the only data that was available. The citizenry of this town has invested significantly to come up with Lake Garfield-specific data. And with that in mind, I think that we're in a very different place than we were last year when we had no data. Now with the data, we can see the overall health of the lake is declining, not just the health of the mollusks, but the overall health. The biomass that's being created by the lake is increasing. And so I just think we're in a very different place and that's why I'm open to considering the major, minor because when I first read it, I said to myself, I don't know that it qualifies for that. But I do recognize the intent of the policy, which is to provide flexibility and I think that that's important. Thank you for my time. Thank you. Under three minutes?
Well, no.
No, no, Ken, I'm getting around it. Just, just a bad joke.
So, you know, they, you know, getting back to this and this. The only question is, does this request meet criteria for an amendment to the open order? We're not talking about, well, you know, does, does it meet the request, does it meet the criteria to go back to what it was five years ago? We're talking about the open order. We're talking about what's happening now with three foot. So you're talking about three-foot impacts versus the six-foot impact. And three-foot drawdown, which would increase another fifty acres of impact of land underwater waste.
Based on the generic data.
That's a lot. That's a lot. We're talking about, we're talking about, you know, space. We're talking about the area that's impacted.
We're talking about the overall health of the lake.
We're talking about what an amendment is. Criteria for an amendment.
Um, the amendment, there is no criteria.
That is actually not, not-
Why don't you read it out loud, Dan?
Yeah, can you read it out loud?
No, I don't want to read it out loud.
Okay. Pauline, would you like to read it?
The issuing authority makes a determination whether the requested change is great enough to warrant the filing of a notice or whether it is relatively minor or can be considered amendment to the final order conditions. And we're the, we're the authority. So it's, it's up to us. That's, that's all I see about it.
Exactly, but we're talking about minor, you know, I mean, you all have been on the commission for a while now. You know that we have had people come to us with requests for amendments and it's generally something like, yeah, we decided we want to put the, the screen porch on the left side of the back of the house instead of on the right side. Or you approved our planting plan six months ago, but the owners now decided they would like to plant Dogwood.
So what flexibility can we offer to the town and the town people? If you don't, if we don't want to accept this as a minor amendment, which I think is the intent to provide flexibility. I know the rules are we can only have one NOI in place at a time, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that doesn't mean we can create an, that the town can't submit another NOI.
Yeah, they would just have to get a certificate of compliance first to close out the first one.
Okay, I'm, I'm understood.
Nobody's saying that they keep lives or-
I'm just answering a question, yeah. So if they don't, i- if, is, is another path for this team, for this team, sorry, wrong word. I'm looking at my teams, um, for the, for the town to, uh, uh, provide another NOI, apply for another NOI.
Absolutely.
And that would not prevent us from doing the three-foot drawdown in the interim, would it?
It would.
No, I'm not asking you.
I know, but-
I'm not asking you. Thank you. You could, you could say why. I would appreciate it, right?
Right, Simon?
Please.
Right now, there is a current order for a three-foot-
This is just yes or no.
There is a current order for a three-foot drawdown. There's, there's nothing preventing the town from submitting a new notice of intent for six feet while this, this other file number is still open. You can still do your three-foot drawdown.
You just can't be issued if you can't NOI.
And that's a matter of right.
Paperwork.
Paperwork. One paper goes on the, the table, everybody signs it and the next piece of paperwork goes on and signed. The C O C gets signed and the new order gets signed at the same time.
No, you could, it could have, the date can be the date, the date of the drawdown can be stated at any point. So, so if we started the drawdown now, the three feet, then you could have your new NOI and then you could amend it. You would not amend it, you would, then the new one would be in place and then the drawdown would be drawn for two six feet.
You can't start the new drawdown.
No, they have, they can't, they have to, they can't overlap time periods, but they can go right up to each other. Okay. Yeah, it doesn't have to be for like a twelve-month period. We put the dates in however we want the dates in the NOI or in the order of conditions.
You don't start the drawdown on November first.
Right.
Not any earlier.
No, I know, but if we said, if we then had another NOI which we could say it's now going to be six feet, that condition comes in place for that same period.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I do believe that there is some degree of flexibility that is intended here and there is no definition here that really defines major versus minor. Um, and I do think that the whole plan of what the stated purpose of this is to allow commissions to have, um, um, flexibility when unseen circumstances arise. And the unforeseen circumstance this time around is that our lake is getting unhealthier by the day. But if the commission is willing to accept a updated NOI, I mean, I think that solves all the problems in a, in a way.
Well, that's absolutely the choice. I mean, if-
There has to be another NOI anywhere, but not a better. So, I mean, aside from the, the, just talking about the major, minor conversation now.
You need a new NOI.
A new NOI, sorry, thank you. I just amended it.
You need just a new NOI.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, to me, that feels like the cleanest way to go. Noel, what is your thought?
My thought is that, um, this is more than an amendment, what they're, what they're asking for. And it's outside the scope of the original project. Maybe not the original project from many years ago, but the current project. And that, um, this doesn't meet the criteria for, for amendment. And that this doesn't meet the criteria for, for an amendment, an amendment is for minor revisions really. This is way more than that. Well, that, that would, that would be my, that would be my.
I mean, I'm in, I'm in agreement with that position, if I read this guidance from the state, it is intended for flexibility. And I think that we're not, we're not voting this month anyway. It gives the town the ability to stay on the timeline that they desire and I think that we should handle it that way.
And come up with a new NOI with all the data that we need to make a, you know, determination and you have to go through the whole, you know, they'll have to go through the whole review again with the state and, and all that, but that's, yeah.
I don't know if this is, if I can say anything about this right this minute, but I'll just say it and then you can tell me if I can't. I just, what I'm wondering is, you know, the way that the dam is or whatever, you know, the opening and the closing, if, if that was also stated on the NOI, how, how you're gonna make that work correctly? Because I don't want Mike to have to go out there and, and open and close it, you know, every day, I want it to be, I want it to work well so that it goes down slowly, so that it.
That's already stated in the NOI, the rate at which we're allowed to open the dam, it's already, it's already detailed in the current NOI.
And the, the public works department handles that.
But it's still a matter of just opening the gate and just kind of walking away, right?
No, no, no.
Every day is being checked.
It took forty adjustments this year.
Mike's been doing it.
So to do, to maintain the three foot.
Is that a good idea?
To make, well. To maintain the three foot, every day I had to look at the water level myself, I had to text D P W and tell them to raise it by two inches or lower it by two inches. So to your exact point, there'd be significant less maintenance if we set the dam at its proper engineered height of a six foot drawdown, the dam was engineered for six feet, the way we're doing it now. But they still handle it in a certain, there, it is programmed in the NOI as to how much depth it goes down. That's during the initial drawdown, then it's, it's designed to be set at the six foot height until the drawdown ends in which we bring it back up gradually. Today, the way we're doing it is we're misusing the engineered device that we have there because we're constantly adjusting the height, which is not how it was designed to be used. So actually, the way we're doing it today is the wrong way.
The way that D P W said in the past, they said, we just open it and it's just always one. How come he said that?
You're misunderstanding it, during the initial drawdown, if you read the NOI, it is, there is a rate at which we open the dam. Hold on, Mike, hold on, Mike, thank you, Mike just. If you read the NOI, there is a rate at which we're allowed to discharge the water, it is not just open, it is open at a rate and then it is set at that level. I think you misunderstood it.
He showed it, he just said.
He showed, yeah.
Can you pull up?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, it's just inaccurate.
The device is right there.
Well, I was just gonna, I can give a little bit of context on Pauline's comment if it's, if it, if the board wants it. I think the old school way of doing it was just crank that thing open for the winter and then close it up in the spring. With more science, we have to, we're gonna have to manage it a little bit, even if it's a six foot drawdown during the fall and in the spring, we have to manage it a lot with a three foot drawdown all winter because of the way that it's built. I mean, we're also, the drawdown doesn't have its fifty year history, it relies a few hundred year history going back to the seventeen hundreds or early eighteen hundreds. So it's been managed many different ways for over 200 years, but the old school way of doing it with this dam was open it up and then close it up.
But you're changing, it's been changed.
That hasn't, that hasn't happened in many years.
Okay, so are we ready, are we ready for motion? Okay, motion to. Good one, good one. Motion to.
Make a six foot drawdown.
What, what is the word I'm looking for?
She denies a motion.
Deny, thank you, I was gonna say decline, a motion to deny the, the request for amendment and require the town to submit a new NOI for this project.
Six foot drawdown.
For the six foot drawdown. So I got a second? All in favor? Aye. Is I aye?
But I have a question. Nevermind.
Discussion.
You seconded?
We just had our.
You seconded it.
Oh, somebody's.
You finally seconded it, okay, Nick, we.
I, I, I have trouble because I don't understand why it's a problem.
Why, why, what is it?
Historical evidence says that you do this and we're all fixated on one year. And I've only on this commission for five months and I think it's absurd, so I, I don't. There, there's a problem. I'm sorry, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not like we're going to get a garage addition and, you know, you can have a three car garage and you want to go one car, you know, it's like, it's a different thing, you have historical evidence that you've done something. I mean, you see.
I mean, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with you, right, but the, but the process way that we have to handle it is that an amendment was asked for and the question is, do we? And now what we need to do is the town needs to create a new request, they call it NOI.
So how do we?
They will do that, it's form and.
We have to finish voting.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, I'll look into talking after, right after the meeting, I'll do it again.
So the motion on the table to deny the request for an amendment and require the town to submit a new NOI for the six foot drawdown.
I second it.
All in favor?
So are you in favor of that? I don't understand.
You just told me that's the thing. I, I, I. I, I don't think.
Where, where are we with this?
The only one that you guys favor is a new notice of intent.
Okay. Right. Put your hand up.
So, okay, all in favor?
That's why we did the amendment.
No, the amendment is for minor changes.
That's up, that's up for the commission to decide.
You, I'm sorry.
You give this commission.
Okay, Mike, 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 please.
We recommend that you guys create a new NOI, I think it's going to be based on the data that's here carefully provided. And I think that we will have a very good discussion and it's very clear the health of the lake is the number one thing.
Will that go in for 2025, 26?
So what we're saying, what we're saying is, let me explain, in November, the current NOI will go into effect. There will be a drawdown to three foot. You may proceed with a new NOI if it is approved, at the moment is approved 21 days later, right?
After.
After, then the old NOI, just one sec, okay, the old NOI will, and will be a certificate of completion, we determine that that's completed, we'll close that. The new NOI will go into effect and then that will direct the D P W to lower the drawdown to six feet.
So, so when does that have to happen in sequence in order for it to be, there is no timing? But I mean, you're, you're gonna start the, the second set of three feet in January, February?
It'll start when if, when and if the NOI gets approved.
Not allowed.
But we're changing the NOI, we're gonna, if we issue an NOI.
Not issuing an NOI, issuing an order.
If they're issuing a new order that drives the drawdown to six feet, there's no reason it can't be done at any time, as long as it's during.
There is, there is.
There is.
You can't.
No, you're waiting. I mean, that should have been on the table before the votes were.
Yeah.
But you've got the three feet, there's.
No, there's no law. There's no law.
No, there's no law.
You're, you're, you're referring to the guidelines.
Guidelines are not, not.
Which says, why are you telling?
So why can't there be another NOI submitted by next month?
We're not only talking about page one.
You're gonna draft.
I mean, it's basically gonna look exactly like the one that you got last year with the exact same information that I presented today and the exact same information that Ken presented today. So in my opinion, it is duplicating the regulatory process for proving that there are positive impacts of the six foot drawdown, not negative impacts.
It's a little bit curious, it's a minor matter.
The whole purpose of the drawdown is to improve the resource.
But how do we make it happen this year?
Just to make sure it happens this year, is it in this year's calendar, 25, 26, the drawdown? Can, can it happen this year?
As long as the NOI is approved before the drawdown occurs, why, why not?
You just physically can't get it done in that.
Why not?
Thirty days for natural heritage to review and approve, then you have to wait two weeks before you can hold a hearing, then you have 21 days after the hearing is closed and the order is written. You're looking at a minimum of two to three months.
He only already sent it to natural heritage.
Yeah, did not be done.
The block is already started.
No, they said they would withhold their comments if we were to submit a new NOI and then they would restart the process.
No, if you don't allow an amendment, it's, it's another year.
It's another year or six.
Kiss my lake health butt.
This should have been understood before the vote.
We voted.
What was the drawdown denied?
I mean, I thought, I will say, but I asked the very specific question that if we had a new NOI that changed the drawdown depth, that it could be implemented. I asked that question and it was answered affirmatively.
But you weren't thinking about the, the required dates.
I, I, I asked whether we began the drawdown at three feet.
That's what I understood.
And then we approved another NOI that the drawdown depth could then be changed, that is why I voted in the manner that I did because that question was answered affirmatively.
That's what I thought too.
Revoke.
So revoke.
Yeah.
So can I just?
I agree.
So, even if it's amended, we still have 21 days to issue an order, an amended order. It doesn't change any time for it.
Number first, when we start the drawdown, perfectly fine, no problem. That's why we came in September, that's why we did this in September.
Why didn't you do it earlier?
Okay, we can't have it. I think we need to vote again, I think I was.
This is all this, this amendment is going outside the original order. It's a lot more.
Way is it way up?
You're talking about doubling the size of the drawdown, it's not a minor amendment, it's not a minor change, minor revision. It's doubling the size of it, doubling the impacts, doubling the effects.
Going back to.
It is not.
You're going back to the original, I need that for years.
Three feet out of the entire lake.
Yeah, that's an amendment.
Well.
We made a mistake last year.
What was the vote?
I mean, honestly, we closed the public comments.
I know, I'm trying to say we closed the public comments, we were having a discussion.
But you were still asking people in a public.
We voted.
But you don't understand.
I did not understand.
Yeah, I think, I think I had bad inspiration in that.
I did not understand the vote.
Wait, you guys don't understand?
From what Kim said.
We didn't understand the question. Important question.
Well, I was grabbing.
The six feet, what's your?
I know where you.
I read everything.
Regulations?
I asked the question of our agent who's here to inform us, I got an answer which I brought into my calculation.
Which I also brought in. I thought that we were gonna be able to have both of them happen at the same time. It sounds like it's gonna have to be a whole year, but they're gonna have to wait.
I'm fine with it.
John 1130, Elephant Rock, Rota, but I respectfully request that the board make a motion to reconsider its previous vote in order to address the issue of whether or not this is a major or minor issue with the information they now have, which is that a decision needs to be made in the, in the process that's been started in order for it to be considered for the drawdown for this year. Otherwise, a year is lost.
But the, but the date is irrelevant when you're looking at, is this a minor or a, or a major?
That's for the board to decide, agree, but I think, I think the board is now viewing it differently than it did before given the information that's been provided, so I would request that there be a motion for reconsidering.
Thank you.
Anyone to make a motion?
You should join the commission except that we.
No, we're good, we're good, you guys have to work it out.
So I guess, if we, let's say for example, just any for example, if we, if we right now approve this amendment, let's say for example, we.
We, we're not approving any amendment today. The only question. Exactly, the only question before the commission is, was, does this meet the criteria to be considered as an amendment?
Okay, so then if we, if we do vote that way, then we would have to wait till the next meeting.
Then we have to have another public hearings to consider the amendment.
And then if we do that, at that time, let's say for example, we do say, okay, we approve it, then we add conditions, we add conditions. Okay, so we have to wait till the next meeting to do that, okay, so I'm asking.
How do we get it done?
So, where are we, what do you guys want to do?
Let's keep practical and get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so three, do you feel that way?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the clauses, so I guess I'm going to ask for, go back and ask for a re-vote since three members feel like. So we're not necessarily that in the amendment, you have to throw an earlier drawdown, which is outside the guidelines and a earlier refill, which is also outside.
Why are we adding to that?
No, it's an earlier refill to allow the, the refill.
Which is also outside the guidelines.
No, it's trying to get to a sooner.
So that's.
And it's not factor of the new one that is made. It's consistent with the, the guidance that's drafted in right now.
Drafted or the guidance that's already in, in showplace?
The guidance that's in place currently is that we're supposed to talk to Mass Wildlife, come to an agreement on something, but we have been trying to have a conversation and like actual scientific debate about this subject of drawdown statewide and they've given us no data.
What you have to have on Mass Wildlife to have that conversation?
We'll tell them to respond to my emails.
Well, that's, that's kind of your problem, my loss.
No, it is our problem, no, it is our, it is our problem, it's our problem.
Mass Wildlife is probably waiting for a new notice of intent before they comment.
But it's not.
Not if it's a minor.
I mean, they do make a lot of good points in here and they take issue with a lot of things that you said in your, in your request.
Mass Wildlife.
Yes, yes.
So. They, they.
So they review a lot of the things that you said. And there's a lot of, no, no, but there's a lot of questions here and I think, you know, those questions, you know, deserve to be, deserve to be, you know, addressed and considered. I mean, doubling.
This is a generic report.
They're not asking for, I mean, if you were asking for, to change it to a two foot drawdown instead of three foot, yeah, that's a minor, a minor amendment, but you're asking. And that there's.
After the restoring, it's, it's to restore, it's minor just.
That's right, not, not historical, we're talking about the current order.
How to do it.
So, you want to take a re-vote, is that where we are?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, Polly, yeah? Yes, okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to take the recount of our votes when we determine the issue.
Or do a re-vote?
But based on the information that's accurate as to what the outcome is.
Okay, does somebody want to restate that information?
Yes, if we don't, if we don't accept what somebody, as an amendment to the proposal right now, then they'll delay the process.
Yeah.
That's sort of the summary, I think is in my mind right now. If you're willing to accept that, then you just vote for that.
Okay, so.
It's a bit elaborate, but I think.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right.
This for the re-vote, this for the re-vote, yes.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, all right, so, does somebody want to make another motion?
I'd like to make a motion whether we accept the request to amend.
No, we're actually consider.
Consider the amendment, right, request, based on the current. Somebody needs to second that.
Second it.
So I'm sorry, wait a second, I want to just. So I'm sorry, wait a second, I want to just make a point here, I said it slightly differently than you did, you did the first time, so we made a motion to deny the first time. So I just wanna make it clear that I was saying, I'm making, I just didn't wanna be weird about that language, right? Do you want me to say deny, or?
No.
Say that we were going against it, if we, should we say, accept the amendment?
To make a court.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, let me restate it again, sorry, I would like to make a, a motion to accept the amendment, to review.
Accept the request.
Accept the request.
Consider.
To consider. The amendment as presented to this point, for this meeting. All in favor? I'm sorry, I can't say all in favor, I'm sorry.
Who seconded, I think Paulie.
No, I think, I think he did.
He either way.
Neither one of them wants to say.
I'll put one for second and one for.
So it's been seconded? Yep, okay, you gotta vote, you gotta say the number.
Oh, okay, all in favor? Well, okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Can we request? The amendment should be matched to copy the amendment today.
No.
Why not?
It's a public hearing, it needs to be advertised as a public hearing, it's a completely separate, separate thing.
That's what we requested, that's what the public hearing.
There was no public notice.
We did, we had a public notice to every butter and to the Berkshire Eagle.
It also wasn't submitted, there's, there's.
Application.
There's no, there's no, there's no public hearing in this notice that was published in. She was in a butter notice.
It, it does not have a date, a time, and place of public hearing.
I'm gonna solve this problem, okay?
Okay.
So there's no public hearing?
And you're supposed to do that.
Okay, Mike, 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 please, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
How are you?
Kim, 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 please, please. Mike, Mike, please.
Always.
Please. Thank you.
I paid for it.
Thank you, Roger. Okay.
Um, I'm not sure we're accepting.
I would just like to make a suggestion, if I may, um, given the intense interest in this matter and the fact that it's a relatively significant time-sensitive matter, um, I would request that the board consider scheduling a, a special hearing within the, at the end of the maximum amount of time necessary to perfect whatever notice wasn't properly perfected. So it doesn't have to wait till your next meeting, which I think would be sixteen days or something of that sort. Um, I think that this is of enough interest to the commission and to the town um, that to move the matter forward as quickly as possible and, and to reach a decision as quickly as possible is in the best interest of everybody. So I would respectfully request that you schedule a special hearing.
Our next meeting is scheduled to be on October sixteen, okay? Right? That's right. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking.
Okay.
Thank you. And, um, you know, I, I, I don't know if everyone's, you know, availability is available for that. So, I mean, does the sixteenth allow us to, if we were, what is the date of the effective date of the NOI?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. What day do we start the drawdown?
It's supposed to be first. Right, that's the one that was proposed initially that we have the order of conditions for, but the date of drawdown, it's supposed to be moved up which takes on the request for amendment order. So we were requesting an earlier drawdown start date, so we could do it slower to reach, uh, the target, um, at the same time as the date that was in the initial.
So.
But ending the same day, or ending the number?
Yeah, so like, it, in here, I believe it was October first.
Yeah, it was.
It's like, October fifteenth is our date?
It's October first.
Yes.
Yeah.
So twenty-one days from now would be October ninth. Yeah, I'm gonna be in Vegas.
By the way. By the way, just so the board knows, this was submitted in time in the Berkshire Eagle, and we use the form that the Monterey Commission requires, and it says, information regarding the daytime and location of public hearing regarding requests for amendment may be obtained from the Monterey Commission, notice to the public, right? Will be published five days before, in the, in the agenda, in the agenda that you do. So this is perfectly done, it was done perfectly, except for the fact, you were told one day before the deadline that the Conservation Commission was not going to do their job and put it in the paper, because the Conservation Commission always does it.
Okay, look at some here, and point fingers back and forth, Mike, but that's not exactly how it happened, and.
It is, I got a notice one day before. I had to, I had to ask special favors, I had to do special things with Berkshire Eagle to get it done, I had one day to do it.
And if, and it wasn't a public hearing notice.
It is, I'll, I'll show you what.
It's not, it's in a butter notice.
No, it's, no, it's not.
Read it, it's in a butter notice.
No, no, I'm showing it to you, because this is the form.
I printed it out, it's in a butter notice.
It's not in a butter notice, what's that?
Read what they printed, what they printed was in a butter notice.
That's, no, that's not what it is.
Yes.
This is what I gave them. Time and place and location of public hearing.
And the one that they printed in the paper was in a butter notice, so it's.
That's you in the mail, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the mail.
Is there any way that we can see what actually was printed?
Berkshire Eagle?
Yeah.
She said she printed it out.
I did print it out, I don't know if I have it with me, Kim, do you have a printout of the Berkshire Eagle public notice that was printed?
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Well, why did the Conservation Commission not do their job?
Mike.
No, don't, don't sigh, tell me why.
It was not that of the Conservation Commission's not doing their job.
It is.
Well, first of all, you know what?
Go and look at the article then.
It's.
Mike, just.
There was a lot going on, I, we are understaffed, overworked, there was a lot going on, and not everything got done, and this application was submitted.
That's not an excuse. That's not an excuse.
That was not me.
So I'm taking responsibility for the application coming in late, I'm a field scientist that's in, in the field during.
Everybody just listen to what Hillary's saying.
So I'm, I'm taking responsibility for the application going in later than we wanted it to be.
Thank you.
Because I'm a field scientist, I work with over twenty-five different lakes in the region, and I am in the field during most of the summer season, and not able to do the paperwork part of things, so that is why it has been turned in when it did. I actually worked through my vacation with my toddler to turn this in on the day that it was.
Thank you.
If we need, we're here. If we need, we need October tenth, which is a Friday,
then that would provide twenty-one days, and I know that that's not optimal for the drawdown duration, but we could still have a drawdown duration. That would allow us to all work together, we were able to have a special meeting on a Friday when Lake Buell requested it. I think this is of significant public interest. I mean, I'm willing to give my time to have a special meeting to do it because of the intention.
Fix it if you're going to Las Vegas.
I'll leave it to the tenth, I'm back on the ninth, I'm back on the ninth, and I should be almost not drawn by the tenth, so.
Not now.
I'm working, again, I'm working, I swear, I'm working the whole time I'm there. But I mean, I would, I would be glad to participate in a special motion meeting on October tenth if others would.
I've got, just a quick question for Hillary, that's okay, I know we're just all crazy here like a circus, but Hillary, so if we do the drawdown later, then does that mean it has to happen faster? Are you gonna be opening, is it gonna happen faster? Depends on what?
It depends on rainfall, it might not, if it doesn't rain that much.
But I'm talking about, like, you know, draining the lake, does it have to happen faster because you're trying to get the water to come out of the lake more quickly? Because we're late, let's do the drawdown.
It depends on evaporation and rainfall, so it could, but it also could not.
Yeah, I, I just live down river, I live on a, it's concerning me.
If, if, with the amendment, the current three-foot is still in place, you could be going to three-foot starting November one.
But I thought you said the state law would not allow it.
For new, a new NOI.
A new.
So you could start it on October first.
Okay, thank you, for that clarity.
That's why, when I spoke initially, it said, if you go for amendment, you make it happen, if you want an NOI, it will delay you a year.
I just started.
Oh, that's a ten.
Okay, that's helpful, then, that, that's helpful, then, then perhaps we don't need to have a meeting on the tenth, we can stay with our regular scheduled broadcast.
No, it sounds like. We still.
Then it is a year, don't they need twenty?
No, 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 because this is not a new NOI, this is a new amendment.
You mean what the notice said, did the notice say public hearing, was it Friday?
Uh, the notice does not include the date, uh, time, or location of the public hearing.
Excuse me, it says right on the, this is the form that the Conservation Commission has, and the bottom it says, at your request.
Whatever the form is, might be saying what was published in the paper did not have that, which means it wasn't a legal notice.
It is legal, because it says you can request the time and place of the meeting.
Right, because the time and place of the meeting is on the town website, the references are on the town website, it's all.
That's what they want. This is one right here.
If you look at the other legal notices, you'll see they all have dates and times.
It should be, yeah.
Is there anything else we need to be doing, can we make a change? Anything else we need to do?
Uh, this is just an, um, change minutes.
It's written down.
And it's actually really, the assembly of amendments.
So did we decide we're gonna have a special meeting?
Well, that's, uh. That is. No, 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 please, let them know that.
Notice, this, this.
Like, like another day, every day. Every day, and, and get it, you know, get it, make the get it published and all that.
I just returned. So, I just, I wanna make sure that we have a common understanding.
Earlier.
You'd rather do it earlier? Okay, I mean, I'm fine with that, and, you know.
I mean, you know, Catherine Catherine.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm gonna be here, I'm just gonna be, I'll be here, I'll still be on Vegas. October tenth? No, Vegas. No, because it needs twenty-one days' notice, yeah, so, yeah. Get the movie, Ben, we'll all go to Vegas with you. We're already going to ten thousand of our friends.
Tell us if the room is available that day.
On what day?
The tenth.
What time?
Say, three in the afternoon, I don't know, I was just guessing, I'll be here.
I'm two hours away.
Oh, oh.
So if, if, can I attend remotely, if I can come via Zoom for the second meeting, please? I'm two hours.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem. We haven't talked about doing Zoom at this, at the Conservation Commission yet, we have to still talk about that.
At this point, our meetings are in person only.
Yeah. We can have a discussion about this after the meeting.
There's no reason, we can't, we have it, we're, we're, we're on a meeting.
We haven't talked about this.
People on.
That's a select board meeting, we're still processing about this.
There, there is no one scheduled for the tenth of October.
There's nothing scheduled for the tenth on that, right? At three o'clock?
Nothing scheduled.
Yeah. Okay, can we get your notice in in time?
You, you should publish the notice, you're the commission setting, setting a special here, a special meeting.
Yes, Shane would be publishing the notice.
Yeah, but you guys wait for me without me for meeting.
You might not be attending?
It's Friday.
But if the select board comes and we record the meetings, then there'll be a record of it.
Meeting now.
And, and you can also, people could also dial in.
Yeah, thank you, Sue, thank you.
You guys can at any time choose to record your own meetings and do.
We haven't chosen format.
No, I'm just saying, I'm noting that you could choose that at any time.
Means or no. All right.
Tom, can I ask a question? What are you deciding, this is the next meeting, whether you could actually decide to do it? And then first.
Decide to set a date that will work.
To do what?
But yeah, same, we can say on whether.
To, to make a decision on whether we're going to accept the amendment.
That's all.
Can I decline that?
No, we don't.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
That can't be going, going to that.
Now, the next thing.
And it was, it was on the agenda as, as a discussion item.
And who's decision?
We have, um, we have to put that.
Yes. So, Don, you wanna make a motion for the special meeting? You'll do that, Shane, you'll make sure it's in the newspaper, it says public hearing. Are we talking about three o'clock? Date and time and all that.
I was gonna.
Well, you started the motion, morning would be good, but you'll have enough people, you just started the motion.
We have to make sure we have enough people, you think Catherine can come? I don't know, you'll have to ask her.
Just three o'clock work for you?
Yeah.
Just three o'clock work for you?
It's fine, I'm totally tired.
Stop ragging. All right, I'll three o'clock work for you.
Uh, no, but that, that's, that's fine, go ahead.
You wanna try a different time then?
No, because I'll be away for three weeks, which I'm sure will make very, a lot of people very happy, so. I know.
You wanna go to Vegas with me?
Sure.
All right, uh, I'd like to make a motion to have a special meeting on October tenth, uh, at the time of three o'clock PM to have a, to make a decision on the amendment to change the drawdown.
He won't be here, right? Oh, no.
Just be careful about form.
You guys just say you can have a form.
No, you want.
Our form is four now?
Yeah.
It's four.
Not me in the.
Ken, does, somebody, why doesn't somebody reach out and cap it?
Well, if we have a form, it'll be four if the four of us attend, and then we'll cap it, yeah.
Is there a PDF copy of this that I'm having?
I don't know, I, that's, that's all I got, they, they probably have PDFs.
Let me just finish my motion so that we can wrap up.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to have a special meeting on October tenth at three o'clock to start to make, have a vote on the amendment to increase the drawdown from three feet as stated to six feet. Second.
Is it not to vote whether to accept or not?
That meeting will be to, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm voting, I'm asking for your vote.
Just trying to.
To have a meeting, to have the vote.
And then you have to have another meeting?
No, that's not what.
That'll be, they'll make a decision.
Is that seconded?
Yes.